Okay, good evening. It is 6:30. As authorized by Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, this meeting may be convened into closed executive session for the purposes of seeking confidential legal advice from the city attorney on any item on the agenda at any time during the meeting. The City of Bastrop reserves the right to reconvene, recess, or realign the regular session, or called executive session, or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. It is 6:30. It is December 10th. I am calling this meeting to order. Councilmember Peterson is, I was thinking about the expression, "under the weather", and how different the weather is today, and he is, not only is his wife not feeling well, but he is not feeling well, and he thought it would be better to not come spread his germs to the rest of his council members, so we wish them a speedy recovery and hope that they will recover soon. And we are expecting Councilmember Jackson, but even with the two of them gone, the four of us make a quorum, and so we are allowed to conduct our meeting. This evening, we have Gabriel Guerrero. Come on up, Gabriel. Gabriel, you can stand right here. There you go. And he's going to be joined by his friend Kylie Candidate. This is Kylie. Y'all come stand here and turn around and face the audience, I'm going to talk about you. They are both 4th graders, and they attend Emil Elementary, and they are a part of the art club. Now, according to Kylie, Gabriel doesn't do a whole lot of art because he likes making popcorn. So, he makes popcorn for the art club, which probably makes him very popular. That's his job. And Gabriel said his favorite subject in school is math, and he also likes science, but they tend to do more math, so he likes math. And Kylie likes science. And the city secretary will tell you, council, you will not be surprised, I think I've just about got Gabriel talked into being an engineer. So, with that, if everyone will please rise, these young people will lead us in our pledges.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Let's give these young people a round of applause. And if you guys will stay right here, I think Brandon's going to take your picture, and Colin will take your picture, too. So, thanks to their teacher, Ms. Blaylock, and thanks for parents getting them out, and thank you so much. Let's give them another round of applause. If you will please remain standing, Chaplain Cottle will be giving our invocation tonight. Mr. Cottle?
Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight, we give you thanks, Father, for so many blessings that you have given us. First of all, you gave us your son. Second of all, you gave us a country to live in where we have the freedom to come together and be our own government. Thank you for these ladies and gentlemen who are here tonight, Father. I ask you bless them, bless all of our leaders all the way up to Washington, DC. Father, just touch everybody's heart and let them know, again, remind them what's right and what's wrong, and help them make the hard decisions they have to make. And, Father, we just ask that this meeting would be held in peace, and everything would be done according to your will, and improve the city and the life of Bastrop. In Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
You may be seated. Thank you so much, Chaplain Cottle. We appreciate the work that you do for our police force and our first responders. Thank you for being here tonight. We're glad to see Councilmember Jackson. Thank you for being here. And we are, Colin, we're going to go to mayor's report. And do you, did you, were you able to pull, there we go. All right. We, you can sign up for It's Time Texas. We were at 14 for a long time, and I texted Chief Algelt and said that we only have one person as an employee for the City of Bastrop, and I happened to know that it was me. And he said, "Well, there'll be two, because I just got signed up." So, we're at 31 people signed up. We get extra points if you sign up prior to January 6th. It's really easy. There'll be some social media going out, and I know the city manager has graciously agreed to visit with the employees at her voluntold employee meetings, so they'll be voluntold to sign up for It's Time Texas, I think. So, we're, our event is going to be on January 11th from 9:00 to 12:00, but the City of Smithville won for extra small, and we will be competing for small, and we're going to do some joint events together. So, really appreciate Colin's help, but that is hot off the presses, exactly how we're doing. So, we already have 28,450 points, so very happy about that. And if you happen to be in the audience and you haven't signed up, feel free to grab your phone and/or iPad and sign up. All right, let's go on. It was kind of busy between November 15th and December 3rd. At Wassel Fest, we had 18 retailers and restaurants that participated in Wassel Fest, and it was fabulous. We had a great time. This is a picture of Terry Moore and I, we were with Danny and Gary Moss, who agreed to be judges, and we were meeting the judges and grabbed that picture. Right below that, you'll see the four of us that attended the TML Region 10 meeting. It was in Bryan. And I want to take just a quick moment. The president of TML Region 10 is Mayor Mooney, and Mayor Mooney's wife passed away unexpectedly on October 10th. And so, if you would just keep him and his family, that's a rough thing to go over any time of year, but especially this time of year. So, if you would just keep Mayor Mooney in your thoughts and prayers, I would certainly appreciate it. We did our tree lighting, and there's a picture of my husband and I, because a lot of people don't know I have a husband, I do, and there he is. And sometimes I have to go home and introduce myself to him because he hasn't seen me in a long time, but it's shocking to me that it was tree lighting and I'm in a sleeveless shirt. It was really warm that night. But we were serenaded by the choir from Blue Bonnet Elementary, that's the Cardinal Choir, and they did a fantastic job, and hats off to Rebecca and her team. It was really a great ceremony, and the look on the kids' faces when Santa came to help us light the tree was just unbelievable. And Councilmember Rogers was selling hot chocolate for the theater group.
It was kind of hot, so we sold more water than we sold hot chocolate.
They also had cold water, and that was quite a hit that night. The picture next to that was my day at Mina Elementary School. I met with all of the 4th grade classes, and this was one of the 4th grade classes, and they are just a joy to be around. And then above that is the, I was interviewed by the entire 9th grade of Circa School, and I'm not sure if the 4th grader asks harder questions or the freshmen, but they hold no bars, and it's always an enjoyable time. This is the third year that I've done that. And then off to the right, I was dropping off my Feed the Need gobble kit, and last time I reported, they collected 492 kits, but I got an email update, they actually collected 494 kits. But the most important thing is that every family that signed up wanting a kit was able to receive a kit. So, I love that we have a giving community. And then in the bottom right-hand corner, I attended the Men Who Cook, which is a fundraiser for the Rotary, and I want to thank Norm and Jeanette Jones for letting me sit with them at their table, and it was just a wonderful event. Anytime I can go and actually eat where I don't have to cook or clean up, that's a win for me, so, and doing it for a good cause on top of that. So, if we go to the next page, you'll see planned events. I'm doing a shameless plug. The best Christmas pageant ever is truly the best Christmas pageant ever. It is a great play, and not just because my youngest grandson is in the play, but it's really, really a good play.
And Mayor Colin Guerrero's two children are also, all three of his children are in there.
All three of Colin's kids are in there as well, yeah. It's a good play, isn't it, Colin? Yes. I spent the day at Generation Citizen in Austin. I was judging projects. Most of the projects were from Elgin, but there was also some from Keeling, and I'll do that again in the spring, and that's when the Bastrop kids participate. I then also attended the Bastrop County Complete Count Committee meeting. The census will be here before you know it, and honestly, in a nutshell, getting yourself counted for the census is the way to bring your federal tax dollars back locally. Everybody's paying federal taxes, and the way that it is allocated out to the communities is based on the census, so please make sure that you, all your friends, all your family get counted, and there will be more information about that coming. Here we are at the council meeting tonight. I'll be going to CapCog lunch with Mayor Protem Nelson tomorrow. The TX-21 meeting has been postponed, so I will not be attending that on Friday, but my husband and I are going to go to the rendezvous, and this Saturday, if you are bored on Saturday, it is completely your own fault. The library open house is from 10:00 to 4:00. The holiday open house on Main Street is from 12:00 to 5:00. The Bastrop County Historical Society Home Tour is from 12:00 to 5:00. Snow day, did you hear me, Kylie? Snow day is from 12:00 to 5:00. And then the lighted Christmas parade is from 6:00 to 8:00. So, there's going to be a ton of things going on. It's supposed to be really nice weather, it should be just a great, great weekend. I've got a board meeting on Monday, and then the following Friday, we are hosting a reception for First Sergeant Filipowski, who is retiring from the Army and has a love of Bastrop, and his reception's going to be here in council chambers. Then the following page shows upcoming events, and that's all next year, so you can, God bless you. You can see those things, and I, just the only thing I want to draw your attention to is the ITT stands for It's Time Texas, and the kickoff meeting will be on January 11th. With that, that concludes my mayor's report. Councilmember Rogers, anything you want to share with us?
Well, now I mentioned parade, because there's tons of interest, and it'll be lighted like always, so come out and see it.
You have worked hard on that parade for, how many years have you worked on that parade?
This will be 13, I think.
That's awesome.
Something like that.
Thank you. Thank you for that work. Mayor Protem Nelson?
I'm still catching my breath from your presentation. I have nothing.
Yes, yes. Councilmember Ennis?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes, I'd just like to say I'm glad to be able to speak this week.
Yay!
At this council meeting. I hadn't lost my voice in many years, and so I'm sure it was a blessing to some people, but I was, I'm glad to be able to speak tonight, and that I will. But it's still a little gravelly, it's been coming and going. I just wanted to say, yes, the tree lighting was lovely, it was wonderful, the choir and Santa's arrival and everything, and the decorations are great. And as I mentioned earlier to some people on Facebook, the Texas Town and Country, which is TML's magazine, featured Bastrop, downtown Bastrop, a photo in their latest edition, and there's an ad that has a picture of our Main Street all lit up for the Christmas holidays. I was so glad when I got it in the mail to receive it, and it really looks nice. On a kind of sad note, I just wanted to mention to those of you that may have known Mayor Mark Holm in Elgin, he passed this past weekend, and his services are this weekend, this Sunday night, so I'd just like to keep his family in prayer, and those of you that know him or knew him, I just wanted them to let them know that he did pass. I got a chance to work with him when I was working with the City of Elgin, and he was quite a remarkable man and a great mayor. That's it.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Jackson. City manager?
Mayor Chief Algelt is going to come up and kind of do some Christmas time safety and security measures, because it's the time of year where it's crime of opportunity.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, council, city manager. As the city manager said, this is a time of opportunity for holiday givings, and unfortunately, some of our thieves take advantage of that, too. I did a comparison because some of the posts that we've been following on social media has shown that we've had an uptick in crime. Last Friday, with the multimedia department, we published a public service announcement that has some really important fire safety tips and crime prevention tips that is on our social media, and I just wanted to give some statistics. In 2018, from Black Friday until December 9th, which is what we're going to run the comparison of, we had four vehicle burglaries. Now, three of those vehicle burglaries were, the vehicle was unlocked, and so it makes it very tough to protect your belongings when we don't take the initial step, and that's locking the door. One of them was forced entry. This year, to date, we've had five vehicle burglaries, so one increased in that time period. Three of them were no signs of forced entry, so once again, they were left unlocked. One had no signs of forced entry, but the owner believed that they locked it, but once again, there was no forced entry, and then one. So, we've gone from 2018, where 75% of our vehicle burglaries were because we didn't lock our doors, and they were crimes of opportunity. Still takes somebody that's unscrupulous and willing to do that, but we're making it too easy for people to take our property. And then this year, we're at, if we count the one that's no signs of forced entry, 80% of our vehicle burglaries have been because of that. An uptick that we did not have reported last year from this time was theft of parcels or mail. We've had three in that time period. We have had some great assistance from the community, and we're working some leads and hoping to identify the people or persons that are responsible for those types of thefts, and we're moving forward with that. And unfortunately, this year, we've had one business that was broken into, and we're also actively working that investigation. So, what I want to tell the community is to remember, be mindful of your property, your surroundings. Don't make yourself an easily accessible target, which is, when you're going to do your Christmas shopping, lock your belongings in your trunk, don't leave them on the front seat. And if you do have to leave them in your front seat, please lock your door and make it an extra step that they have to take. Make them think twice before they take your property. The same thing with your packages on your porches. If you know you're going to be out of town, and you're going to be away for a while, see if a neighbor can pick them up. Also, see if that's not the case, that the deliverer can hold it at a location for you to pick it up. The other thing that I'll tell you that we've been tracking on social media, too, is unfortunately, with it being so busy with all the parcels being delivered, some of those carrier services are having a difficult time delivering them to the right address, and so sometimes that takes place, too. But we are monitoring that. What I would ask is that if you see any type of suspicious activity, that is the appropriate time to dial 911. We do not have the resources to monitor social media 24 hours a day, and so to report it on social media and to make your neighbors aware is a great thing to do, and it's great to be a part of that type of community, but if we don't get the information while it's happening, the probability of us catching the person becomes exponentially harder. So, we ask that if you see something that looks out of the ordinary, give us a call. We would rather come 100 times than not being anything, and not come the one time to be able to catch that, because I'm convinced that this isn't five incidents where it's five different people. They're usually crimes of opportunity, and it's the same person or group of people that are commonly responsible for these types of crimes. But what I do want to tell you is that unfortunately, this is common for the holiday season. We're going to do our best to try to curtail that, but unfortunately, it's one of the not-so-pleasant things that come with the Christmas time.
Chief, the other thing that I've heard, and I think that you will agree with me, is people need to lower their garage doors. It gets dark early, and I had somebody saying they were driving through subdivision, there were open garage doors and nobody around, and to me, that feels like another opportunity.
Absolutely. Closing garage doors, closing your doors, locking your doors, having motion detector lights, you know, it's bad that we're coming into an environment that we have to do that because it's town charm. Sometimes it's some of our local people, but I will also tell you that a lot of thieves travel on the major, 71th and Bastrop, it's not uncommon for them to stop, spend a few hours, take what they have, and move on, which also makes the crime a lot harder to solve, so.
I've also heard of several mailboxes being robbed. I mean, there's been mail that's been, I don't know if it's reported, and forgive me for not reporting it after hearing it several times, but here's people have their mailboxes raided, and mail has been thrown all over town, and so people have been trying to help to get it back to themselves. I don't know if that's been reported. There's been an uptake on the North End and Tahitian, for sure. A lot of mail, mail has taken out of the mailboxes, and some of it, you know, in ditches and on the street and other things, and some of it is missing, period.
Yes, sir. We're aware of that, and we're working on it, and unfortunately, as we all know, sometimes the best gift to give is either a gift card or cash, and so people open their mailboxes and they're looking for those types of things. In addition to normally on the first of the month when people are looking for retirement checks and other types of checks that come to us, it's always a concern that people will take advantage of that.
That's why my grandkids say, "Then mow me, Nani, then mow me," because then it's not the mail. All right, thank you very much, council. Any other questions for, thank you, chief, appreciate it. All right, council, we're moving on to Page 2, we're at work session briefings, we're on Item 5A, received presentation on the proposed amendments for fiscal year 2020. Council, I'll remind you that the backup for the report is a part of Item 9C, which is on Page 209 of your packet. It may make it easier as Ms. Waldron is presenting. Ms. Waldron?
Yes, and I do have detail up here as well. We just wanted to walk through in detail, but most of, if you, most of them pertain to just carryover issues. Budget Amendment Number 1 is in the general fund.
Before you do that, Trey, why don't you explain the time, we call the 13th month, and why are you just now dealing with it?
Well, the carryover issues, I most definitely need to wait for invoices to come in, relate back to fiscal 2019, and make sure that we have closed 2019, and then I can assess the estimates we made last year and what we need to reappropriate in 20. We do make estimates based on what we think we're going to spend in some of, most of these are the projects that require the carriers in, sorry. And so, can't assess that until I know how we ended 18. So, the period 13 is...
And you're close to the end of November, so this is the first council meeting that you can address for?
Yes. Yes. So, Amendment Number 1 actually relates to insurance proceeds. All I'm doing with this amendment is increasing revenue since we received proceeds and increasing the line item expenses that are related to the maintenance of that vehicle. We have to go get the vehicle fixed now, and so no fund balance is touched in this amendment. It's just an increase to revenue and an increase to the expense line item.
So, it's in and out? In and out?
Pretty much, yes. It's in at wash between the two.
Okay, thank you.
Amendment 2 is in the hot funds. This relates to, I have a very detailed description in the staff report, but this relates to the Christmas light expenditure. We originally had 125 budgeted. Last year, when they brought the resolution, the contract forward, y'all approved for them to not exceed 136,900, I did not catch that when we were doing the budget, and so this just brings that amount up to where it needs to be to cover the contracted amount. So, this is yet again, and at wash, it increases the transfer in, which is the revenue account, and it increases the expense line item to cover the Christmas lights.
So, I have a question about that. So, that, if we're paying the same amount, then the Christmas lights should be what they were last year, correct?
Yes.
And do we think that has happened? Councilmember Rogers?
We got the Christmas lights that we got last year, they came and lit the area that I thought, that wasn't lit. They came and fixed that.
So, it has been done?
Yes.
Because I thought it had...
The west side of the bridge wasn't lit, and they did come and fix that.
Okay.
But as in the price, it should be the same.
Okay.
And so, Budget Amendment 3 is just the BPNL side of this, and it's just increasing the transfer out that we're taking from BPNL into the hot funds to cover the additional amount for the Christmas lights. They were already covering the 125,000 that we were transferring in to cover the Christmas lights. So, those two amendments kind of walk hand in hand.
I'm sorry, the way you're saying it, it sounds like the Christmas lights were more expensive than we thought.
No, they were just more than what we budgeted. They were the same contract amount.
But we budgeted the same amount as we spent last year, is that not correct?
No, we budgeted the same amount that we budgeted last year. We actually raised that contract amount during that resolution.
Okay. Now I understand. Thank you.
And that was my error. On Budget Amendment Number 4, water and wastewater, this is yet again, an insurance proceeds where we got the insurance money. We received the money in fiscal 19. The repairs were not made, they need to be made now, so all I'm doing is appropriating out-of-fund balance that increase in that maintenance to the building fund. On Budget Amendment Number 5, this is the street maintenance fund, and so what we needed to do was find a little bit of an additional money for, to cover the street maintenance contract that came in. We were very pleased with the amount, but we were a little bit short in that particular fund. So, the 17,400 is actually a carryover from available fund balance, so that piece of it is a carryover. The 84,000 is actually interest earned in our 2018 bond fund that we are now transferring over and wanting to put it with our other street maintenance money in order to fund all of the expenditures in that fund. So, it's a little, a little bit of both.
That's the street contract we just approved last meeting?
Yes. Yes. So, this is just...
And that'll be two years, year one and year two of street maintenance?
So, this is just putting enough in that fund to cover that contract.
So, I have a question on that. Is the hot box PO'd? Is it, is it off the bulletin board, and we know how much the hot box is, so we won't be coming back?
Yes.
Okay.
It's been yowed and ordered.
Awesome. When's it coming in?
I thought it would be last week, I believe it will be.
Not soon enough, right? Councilmember Ennis, did you have a question?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. Budget Amendment 6 is in the 2019 revenue bond. This is truly just a carryover, so this is taking our estimate we had from last year and just reappropriating those fund balances to make them available this year to finish these projects. And the same with Budget Amendment Number 7 in the improvements fund. We didn't spend as much as we estimated, so we want to carry those funds over and reappropriate them for this year. And I believe that is the last amendment.
Council, for the work session briefing, Ms. Waldron has completed her presentation. Do you have any other questions of her on the seven budget amendment? With...
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Nelson?
The, the tree lighting, or the lighting contract, do we have a breakdown? Let me, let me go back. I'm sure that the majority of that cost is not for the equipment, it's for the assembly and dismantling of the tree lights. And this is probably a question more for council. Would it be, again, lots of comments about the trees are so pretty down Main Street throughout the, at Christmas, why don't we keep them lit during the year? And I just wondered if the operational cost of maintaining those trees during shopping hours, being lit up, might be a feasible project?
So, I'm happy to answer this and still the mayor's thunder, but if you do them, you're randomly quit being special, so you're going to spend $131,000 for 365 days of light, and then what are you going to do to make Christmas special?
Well, but I guess, is part of your question, how much would it be to do it all year?
Yeah, how much would it be, and not, and not, and not just all the Christmas trees, just along Main Street in the shopping area to, and I'm not, I'm not...
We have a meeting with the Christmas tree vendor in January, and we're going to be looking at some options to bring y'all in April, because we've heard from the community that they would like something in addition to Christmas lights. We will get trees priced because we don't own any of that. They come in, they put it up, they take it down. So, if it were to stay up, we would have to buy it. So, when we meet with them in January with this question in mind, we will get an answer to that, and we will come back and share that when we present the Christmas displays, and then y'all can provide us some direction on what would you like Christmas to look like, and what would you like us to look like during the regular time? And we're going to meet with the vendor in January and get all of those costs put together and put together a presentation so we can discuss Christmas in April at our mid-year budget meeting.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Ennis?
My concern with that, Mayor Protem, is that, and I've thought about it myself, is the maintenance involved. I know what it takes to keep my Christmas tree lights on, and that would mean we'd have to have staff to keep those...
Or pay the company to continue to do maintenance.
Or pay the company, yeah, yeah.
And I agree, I guess using the term Christmas lights maybe, it may be using the wrong term, but I think as we, as we do the beautification project up and down Main Street, having it lit up at night in some way, shape, or fashion, might be a, might be a bigger draw, it might create a more amiable atmosphere for people coming downtown, so I'll just call them lights and not Christmas lights, so we can differentiate between those.
So, it could even be lit from the bottom, is what you're saying?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Ennis, were you done? Okay. Councilmember Jackson?
I, I agree that I think it'll take away some of the thunder of the Christmas or the holiday spirit, but since we are doing the Main Street makeover, remember, we're supposed to be putting down some new street lamps and things, right? And all, I think that'll bring some visibility and some lighting to downtown. And I think that'll bring some visibility and some lighting to downtown, and that I think will kind of make the difference because it is rather dark downtown in some spots. But with the new lighting that I hope this, you know, Main Street makeover will provide, I think that'll make up the difference and it'll kind of satisfy that need for lighting and with the landscaping also.
Councilmember Rogers?
I was just going to ask the city manager that, if she didn't mind, I was going to send her a couple ideas that I had that she can talk with her vendor about.
Get some pricing.
And that way, that way she doesn't have to go back to find out my idea in April. She might be able to find out the idea. Okay.
And I'd be glad to send some also if I could, if I may. I just, I was reminded tonight of all the, since the Trail of Lights is opening in Austin tonight, and this used to be my crazy time of year and all the different things, but I have some suggestions also.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
And just to be clear, I'm not trying to be Mr. Grinch and remove the spirit of Christmas from downtown. I just, I was looking to something for us to discuss at some point in time about enhancing the walkability of our community.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Grinch. The, the, the other thing to consider is that I, I don't think we should be spending dollars lighting trees next year when it's under construction the majority of the year. So that may, that may be something to keep in mind. But I completely agree, and I'm confident between Trey and the, and his staff and Tony that we can get some ideas because we could light something from the bottom that would be easy to maintain and that, you know, a mounting from the bottom to uplight the trees and then have lights physically put on for the, there's, there's a middle between doing nothing and doing what we have now all year long. And I think that's what we were wanting to say is let's have a conversation about that.
Tony, are you taking notes?
He already, he smiled at me, so I knew that he was. Councilmember Rogers?
I just wanted, I didn't want someone to misunderstand something you just said in case I misunderstood. We shouldn't be under construction during the Christmas season next year.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure that the businesses realize that we don't plan to be under construction during Christmas time next year.
Thank you for clarifying that. I was really going more towards if, if the decision was made to not take them down, leaving them up while we're under construction doesn't seem like a good use of funds. Thank you so much. We do not plan on being under construction at Christmas, do we, Tony? We will be done well in advance. All right, counsel, do you have any other questions for Ms. Waldron? With your permission, I would like to call, and we're going to be jumping, we're going to jump to 9C so that we can vote on what we've just talked about. I think that will make sense for everyone. 9C, Consider Action to Approve the First Reading of Ordinance 2019-76 of the City Council of the City of Texas, Amending the Budget for the Fiscal Year 2020 in accordance with existing statutory requirements, Appropriating the Various Amounts herein as attached in Exhibit A, Repealing All Prior Ordinances and Actions in Conflict Herewith, Establishing an Effective Date, and Move to Include on the January 14, 2020, City Council Consent Agenda for a Second Reading.
Move for a second?
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Protem Nelson and a second from Councilmember Jackson. Is there any further discussion or questions? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously with four votes. Thank you, counsel. Ms. Waldron, while you're here, we'll go back to 6A and 6B and let you finish. At 6A, Receive Presentation on the Unaudited Monthly Financial Report for the Period Ending September 30, 2019. Ms. Waldron?
Yes, so other than any adjustments that might come in January, this is a final look at fiscal '19. Majority of the things that we've been reporting all year are basically what we saw at the end, the warnings and the negative amounts in the revenue funds, cemetery and impact, especially we've been reporting on all year long. And we will continue to look at that when we're creating those forecasts in the future. Those funds are very hard to forecast, though. On the expense side, I just had one warning fund. So general fund ended up strong. We actually brought in a little more revenue than we projected. We were a little under in expenses, so overall we were about 3% net positive. Sales tax actually ended around 4.5% above what we projected, so that's very strong. Property taxes was very even to what we projected. The water wastewater fund ended almost net perfect. Little bit short in revenue, but also we didn't spend as much as we budgeted, so we were right at half percent. On the revenue side, the electric fund ended in net positive around 5%. They were about 2% below their revenue, but we're also behind in their expenses as well. The hot fund, overall, 15%, two, they ended up being almost 3.5% over what we budgeted in revenue, so that was good. And summary of our legal. And that's it for September.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Ms. Waldron on September?
We will be bringing back the audit report in February.
All right. 6B, Receive Presentation on the Unaudited Monthly Financial Report for the Period Ending October 31, 2019.
It's a pretty simple report, first month out of the chute on fiscal '20, and everything is looking pretty positive at this point. The negative warning in the debt fund revenue is really just short in interest, so we'll keep an eye on that. And also, the cemetery fund has already started in the negative category. Expenses are all positive. General fund revenue, sales tax was right about at what we forecasted for the month. Property tax was a little above, so we're running right on time there. Water and wastewater fund is a net positive, almost 4.5%. Their revenue is slightly over what we projected, which is good. On the electric fund as well, slightly over what we projected in revenue, so we're starting positive in all of those funds. Hotel tax fund is a positive. The occupancy revenue is a little bit short. We did push this budget. We basically reflected where we were shooting for last year. So when you look at a year-on-year comparison, we were about 5,000 short of what, what we were year-to-date last year. So everything is looking pretty good. And that's it.
Any questions for Ms. Waldron with the first month? Thank you, Ms. Waldron. Good job. All right, we're on Item Number 7, Citizens' Comments. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up for Citizens' Comments?
No, mayor.
We are done with Citizens' Comments. All right, get you a drink of water, Ms. Franklin. We're moving on to the consent agenda. Is there anybody on council that wants an item on the consent agenda polled? Is there anybody in the audience that wants an item on the consent agenda polled? Madam Secretary, if you will read the consent agenda.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item 8A, Consider Action to Approve City Council Minutes from November 26, 2019, Regular Meeting. Item 8B, Consider Action to Approve Resolution Number R 2019-133 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, Approving the 2019 Council Meeting Schedule Attached as Exhibit A and Providing an Effective Date. Item 8C, Consider Action to Approve the Second Reading of Ordinance Number 201963 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, Resoning Farms and Estates Lot 3 from P5 Core to P4 mixed, Located at 1706 Farm Street within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit A, Including a Severability Clause and Establishing an Effective Date. Item 8D, Consider Action to Approve the Second Reading of Ordinance Number 2019-67 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, Resoning 0.683 acres of farm lot 37 east of Main Street from P3 neighborhood to P5 Core, Located at 1302 SH 95 within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit A, Including a Severability Clause and Establishing an Effective Date. Item 8E, Consider Action to Approve the Second Reading of Ordinance Number 2019-68 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, Resoning 0.193 acres of building block 6 west of Water Street from P5 Core to P4 mixed, Located at 1110 Water Street within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit A, Including a Severability Clause and Establishing an Effective Date. Item 8F, Consider Action to Approve the Second Reading of Ordinance Number 2019-69 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, Resoning 0.129 acres of building block 6 west of Water Street from P5 Core to P4 mixed, Located at 703 Farm Street within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit A, Including a Severability Clause and Establishing an Effective Date. Item 8G, Consider Action to Approve the Second Reading of Ordinance Number 2019-70 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, Resoning 0.353 acres of building block 8 west of Water Street from P-CS Civic Space to P5 Core, Located at 1028 Main Street within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, shown, as shown in Exhibit A, Including a Severability Clause and Establishing an Effective Date. Item 8H, Consider Action to Approve the Second Reading of Ordinance Number 2019-72 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, Resoning 0.214 acres of building block 1 west of Water Street from P3 neighborhood to P4 mixed, Located at 701 Austin Street within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit A, Including a Severability Clause and Establishing an Effective Date. Item 8I, Consider Action to Approve the Second Reading of Ordinance Number 2019-73 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, Resoning 1.866 acres of Bradford subdivision Lot 2, Fraction from P3 neighborhood to P4 mixed, Located at 1903 Main Street within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit A, Including a Severability Clause and Establishing an Effective Date. Item 8J, Consider Action to Approve the Second Reading of Ordinance Number 2019-74 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, Resoning 0.760 acres of farm lot 5 west of Main Street located at 1910 Main Street and 2.467 acres of farm lot 5 west of Main Street to the west of 1910 Main Street from P3 neighborhood to P4 mixed, Within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit A, Including a Severability Clause and Establishing an Effective Date. Item 8K, Consider Action to Approve the Second Reading of Ordinance Number 2019-75 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, Amending the Bastrop Building Block Code B3 as adopted by Ordinance Number 2019-51. Chapter 2 titled Zoning Procedures, Articles 2.4 titled Administration, Sections 2.4.002B and 2.4.003B, Allowing Zoning Board of Adjustment Members to be Alternates for the Planning and Zoning Commission, Attached as Exhibit A, Providing for Findings of Fact, Enactment, Repillar, Severability, Effective Date, and Proper Notice and Meaning. This concludes the consent agendas.
Great job, Madam Secretary. Thank you.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve, and Councilmember Ennis, and a second from Councilmember Rogers. Is there any further discussion or questions? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously with four yes votes. We are moving on to Item 9A. Counsel, I'm on the bottom of the agenda, page 3. Conduct Public Hearing and Consider Action to Approve Resolution Number R 2019-134 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, Granting Historic Landmark Status for 0.470 acres of building block 54 east of Water Street located at 1305 Pine Street, also known as the Beverly and Lula Kerr House, Within the City Limits of the City of Bastrop, Texas, as attached in Exhibit A, Providing for Findings of Fact, Providing for Repealing Clause and Establishing an Effective Date. Ms. Bills?
Good evening. This is a consideration to designate this as a local historic landmark for the house, and it's actually just right behind the building here. We see it out our planning window every day. This is 1305 Pine Street. The history on this house is, according to the National Register document, it was built between 1890 and 1895. There was some debate on that apparently, but that's what's in our records. It's a raised one-story wood-framed Victorian house. It was previously owned by Beverly and Lula Kerr. Beverly was a barber in town and also was a band and orchestral teacher and had the Kerr's Orchestra. And his wife, Lula, taught music in the school district for over 40 years. This was designated as a National Register of Historic Place in 1978. You can see it even actually goes back to, the map on the right is the, it's a sandborne fire insurance map. I believe this one date is back to 1921. And so you can see from the current survey that the footprint of the house, which is right there, is very much the same. There's been some minor additions over the years. And you can see here, this, the picture on the left is the 1978 photo in the National Register documents, and the photo on the right is today. And the owner is wishing to add it to the local historic registry, and then she'll also be part of the incentive program and have to follow the maintenance standards in the code. At the November 20 meeting, the commission voted unanimously to recommend approval under Items, Criteria A and C within the code, which require at least two of the two criteria to adopt. Any questions?
Councilmember Rogers? Councilmember Jackson?
I just wanted to say that the Kerr family has been a standing family in this community for many years. We even still have descendants here in town. And of course, that's the same family that was responsible for the Kerr Community Center, formerly known as Kerr Hall. Robert Kerr was a state representative as well as part of the local school board here, so that family goes way back in history. And I would love to see this adopted, so I would like to move for approval.
We need to have the public hearing first.
I mean, after, well, after the public hearing, I would like to move for approval.
Okay. Councilmember Ennis?
I would contend that it also is an established feature of the city, so it meets a third criteria.
All right. Any further questions for Ms. Bills? All right, I'm officially opening the public hearing. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up to speak for the public hearing?
No, mayor.
I am officially closing the public hearing. Councilmember Jackson, I believe you want to make a motion?
Right, I'd like to make a motion that we'd approve the historic designation of this building.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Jackson, a second from Councilmember Ennis that we approve Resolution 2019-134. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. The motion passes unanimously with four votes. We are moving on to page 4 of the agenda. Item 9B, Consider Action to Approve Resolution Number R 2019-131 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, Adopting the Budget Planning Calendars for Fiscal Year 21. As shown in Exhibit A, Repealing All, is it 20 or 21?
It should be 20.
I was, yeah, I think that's an error. It should be fiscal year 20.
No, 21.
No, it's 21.
It's next year's budget.
2021, okay, I got you. 2021, there you are.
Mayor and counsel, the budget that you, the budget calendar that you have included in your packet is substantially different than last year. And you can thank Senate Bill 2 for the changes. So I want to explain the essence of Senate Bill 2 to you because logic is irrelevant in understanding the changes to the budget. City Attorney Borquez and I spent some time debating this on the phone. He does a lot of update work for some of the associations that he provides legal counsel for, and he and I were lamenting at the changes. And so, again, don't shoot the messenger of either one of us because we didn't vote. So with all of those asterisks, Senate Bill 2 essentially caps our new revenue at 3.5%. The legislature made provisions for small communities designated with a population of 30,000 or less. And the term de minimis is the $500,000 cap... And the term de minimis is the five hundred thousand dollar cap that they have provided for small cities to raise revenue from. So there are a couple of components that matter here. The first one is the eight percent. And that is the rollback rate that existed prior to Senate Bill Two. So if, as a council, you raise revenue, you can do that without changing the tax rate in some cases. That is larger than three point five percent but equal to or less than eight percent, then there's no ability for the taxpayers to petition an election to debate the increase in the revenue. Whether or not you call an election, we still have to meet a seventy-one day election schedule. So even if there's no intentions of calling the election, seventy-one days, if you, if you look at the first Tuesday of November as a uniform election date, you have to go back seventy-one days. And that's the latest you can adopt the tax rate. And in our case, that's August twenty-fourth, a full month in advance of when we would normally adopt a budget. What's problematic with that is that we don't get final numbers from the tax appraisals office until July twenty-fifth by state law. So you can do the math, and it's twenty-nine days from start to finish when you get final numbers and you get to adopt a budget. If you adopt a rate that is greater than eight percent but less than five hundred thousand dollars, the de minimis, that is, that then makes the budget subject to a petition. Residents have ninety days from the adoption of the tax rate to file a petition. So if you adopt the, the tax rate on August twenty-fourth, September twenty-fourth, October twenty-fourth, November twenty-fourth, that's after the first uniform election date. So that means it's May, which is the first Saturday of May, before you would have an election on the budget. Well, you're into the next year's budget conversations at that point. So the conversation would be is, if you're going to adopt something greater than eight percent, my suggestion would be is that we put it on the ballot, we have an election, and we control the narrative. That way, we don't have to end up refunding taxpayers' money of property taxes in May if it failed after they'd been collected. So you can appreciate the nightmare that could come from that. So this is a, going to be a challenging process. So the calendar that you have is the same, but for everything has pushed back thirty days and is condensed in a twenty-nine day period. Staff and I have already established three full-day budget retreats in January to deal with the outcome of Senate Bill Two. Because if you're going to, to have an election, people need to understand what is at play. So it's really two budgets. What's the budget look like if I don't approve this? What is the budget if I approve this? So that's going to be challenging for us because here is the, here's the real important piece. We don't know what the percentage is going to be until July twenty-fifth. We don't know if it's going to be three and a half percent. We don't know if the valuation's going to generate eight percent. This past budget, it was eight point seven percent. So it, it would impact the budget we adopted last year. So that puts us as staff in a challenging position because we don't know what we're going to end up with. We don't know what's going to trigger what and what choices need to be made. So it is, it's a challenge, to say the least. So we've put together a calendar based on the best information that we have today. Alan is going to be spending some time because he has to update some of the information he shares with his municipal clerk group. We're going to be taking this journey in Ju, January as well. And so we will likely adjust the schedule as we move closer to it. But understand, this is the first time we're dealing with it. None of us think it's ideal. It's challenging at best. So with all of those caveats, I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
So Council, I would bring to your attention the, the budget that we just adopted for the fiscal year nineteen and twenty plan calendar. That's on page forty-seven. And to put that into perspective, the work this past year, it was done between August sixth and September twenty-fourth. And then if you look at page two oh three of the existing packet that we've got tonight before us, that same amount of work is being done between July twenty-eighth and August twenty-fifth. Because to, to her point, the, last year, we got the chief appraisal was required to give us the updated rolls by July twenty-fifth, and that due date this year is on the twenty-fourth. The Senate Bill Two summary, the document was provided with some briefing information from Texas Municipal League. It's interesting to note that if the appraiser gives you the information early, you have requirements at sixty days. So it's, them getting earlier doesn't, doesn't really help anything. Because it, you still have to do things within sixty days. And then we, we've also had the discussion about voting in May for a budget you've adopted and been working under since October to find out that that's not your, I don't, I don't know how any business can, can run that way. So I would be a person voting, like, if we're at a thousand dollars and the election's in May, and if you're at eleven hundred dollars, the election's in November, we need to do eleven hundred dollars and say this is how we would spend that extra hundred dollars so that council and staff and the community knows, this is how the money's being spent. Do I want to vote on that, yes or no? I don't, I don't think we can be two-thirds of the way through the budget year to decide. Councilmember Ennis?
So you're telling us that the elections must be held on either November, the first November, or our election date in May? We can't call an election?
That is correct.
The state of Texas has two uniform election dates, and it is the first Tuesday in November and the first Saturday in May.
Thank you.
The other thing that I've, that we, Council, we talked about collectively, and that I want to share a conversation that I had with the city manager. This, this is our budget document. When we're talking about getting this amount of work done, I fully expect what we're going to get is a much thinner document, and it is going to be the numbers. And all the, the pictures are awesome. I don't want to call it completely fluff because it's important things, but some of the goals and the object, they can't set the goals if they don't know how much money and we haven't told them what to spend it on. So the entire process is going to be much, much different. But the most important thing is we're going to have to get the appraisal information, make really good decisions, and I think, for me personally, have real clarity around what are we spending and what are we spending it on, and be clear, at this point, it goes to an election, at this point, it does not need to go to an election, but this is all, this is what we can do. So it's, so if you thought you were going to take vacation in August, I'm going to beg you to please not be gone in August because you will see that there is a tremendous number of meetings. Councilmember Ennis?
So you're telling us we need to bring Cots up here for August?
Yes, yes, sir. I pretty much have told my staff from July twenty-fourth to July twenty-eighth, they're not going on vacation because from Thursday to Tuesday, we won't be going home. That's the bind we're in.
So what I had told the city manager is, this is, this calendar that is on page two hundred and three is the best calendar we can do with the information that we have right now. And just like the calendar that we approved that says this is a planning document, as it's November, and July feels like three lifetimes from now, as we get additional information or if there's clarification or, then, then we'll update it. But for right now, it, we can not like it, but it's the classic, it is, it is what it is. And we, we all swore oaths to uphold the state's laws, and this is one of them. So do you have any other questions for the city manager? Don't everybody jump for a motion at the same time?
Move to.
No, I, we, we knew that the actions that the legislature was going to cause us to have a fluid process to be able to meet their mandates. And so it's clearly understood that while I'm gone in August, that y'all are really going to be working hard. But I, I don't envy us the task that we're going to undertake, but all the cities in the state of Texas are going to undertake that task. And I think, I think we're preparing ourselves as best we can to meet the mandate. So it's, no, no question, simply because the process is so new.
And I would encourage us, as we start putting the master calendar together, the monthly updates and stuff need to be July and, we, we need to be stripping down agendas and focusing only on the budget. And maybe we forego mayor's reports and everything. We need, we really need to focus on, on the numbers. And that would be another thing I would say, to just try to make sure that staff and councils concentrating on the right things. Councilmember Ennis?
First off, Councilmember Rogers, you're the closest to him. And secondly, I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Ennis.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Rogers. And to the city manager and the staff, we're all in this together. We're all on the same team, and, and we will get through it. Any further questions or discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously with four votes. We have already taken care of nine C, so we're moving on to nine D, which Ms. Waldron is calling her last time she has to present to us tonight. Consider action to approve Resolution twenty nineteen dash one thirty, the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, expressing official intent to reimburse certain water and wastewater expenditures of the City of Bastrop, Texas, attached in Exhibit A, providing a severability clause and providing an effective date. Ms. Waldron?
So in your packet, you do have a resolution, a reimbursement resolution. This reimbursement resolution is for our water and wastewater projects. All of them are running, they're all on schedule. We're making estimates with the available funds that we have on hand right now. But this reimbursement resolution, by putting that in place, protects the city if we get expenditures before we get out to, I believe April is when we have our timeline to issue that next revenue bond. We're wanting to be very careful. We don't want to issue the revenue bond earlier than we need it, but we want to make sure that we're covered if we have any expenditures prior to that issuance. So that's all this is, is just protecting us against the timing of the next issuance.
And Mayor and Council, you did this, this is a routine process when you sell debt, and you did the same process prior to us purchasing the fire trucks, as you did a reimbursement resolution for those as well.
Council, any questions for Ms. Waldron?
I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers.
I moved a second.
And a second from Councilmember Jackson. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously with four votes. We are moving on to item nine E, consider action to approve Resolution Number R twenty nineteen dash one twenty of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, approving an amendment to Task Order Number BAS dot zero zero six C to KSA Engineers for additional engineering services to receive sanitary sewer flows from the north side of Highway seventy-one in the amount of one hundred and twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars, as attached in Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Mr. Jobe?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So if everybody remembers, all the way back in two thousand and eighteen, we issued several task orders with KSA to do the design of the wastewater treatment plant, the trunk mains, and do some feasibility study on that, and also how we were going to get the water from the current plant to the new plant, and what that looked like, so we continue to flush toilets and things of that nature.
You said water, you meant wastewater?
Yes, wastewater, there is a difference, sorry. Significant, so.
Just, just don't want anybody to think we're sending the water.
Yes, so how do we get the current wastewater to the, to the new plant? Thank you. So with that in mind, we did this feasibility study, and what we found out during the trunk main layout is it actually does a couple of things. One, it makes us more efficient in the way that the sewer will get to the west side of the river from the north. Two, it will take some lift stations offline, I think one at Hunter's Crossing, I believe the other is at Riverside Grove. And then three, by taking care of this task order this evening, it'll allow us to do the engineering so we're nimble and flexible. When we get that next wholesale wastewater customer, we can go ahead and extend under the highway and take sewer from north of seventy-one all the way.
And we are in active negotiations with a customer that this would be necessary for.
That is correct.
And it's always better to the system to have fewer lift stations to maintain.
Yes, that is correct.
So when we go to setting wastewater rates, the fewer lift stations you have, that draws down on your maintenance costs. So that's another reason we would want to do this.
So what happens to the lift stations when they, when you don't need them?
They just, they just go away.
They just sit there?
You, you do it gravity. Right now, you're, a lift station is.
No, I meant, what actually, since you won't, won't need it, the lift station anymore, what does the city do? It just gets rid of that whole station?
It becomes a manhole, essentially.
Oh, okay, I was curious what happens to the.
Yeah, that's exactly what happens. Becomes a man, because it's still going to the same place, and it'll just keep going.
Right, I was just curious what happens, just covered.
Yeah, they'll take some of the.
They'll take the pumps and stuff out, yeah.
Controls and stuff, but.
And use it where we can, yeah, there's not much you want to keep.
It's a bug acre.
Okay, just curious.
Yeah.
So with that, I'll take any questions.
Any other questions for Mr. Jobe? I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Ennis. Any further questions? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
All right, Council, now we are at the last individual consideration item for tonight, and it is seven thirty-seven, I'm just saying. Consider action to approve Resolution Number R twenty nineteen dash one thirty-five of the City Council of the City of Texas, awarding a contract in the amount of one million seven hundred and fifty-one thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars to Muniz Concrete and Contracting Inc. for the construction of the Main Street Rehabilitation Project, as shown in Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Hi, Tony?
Hey. Evening, Mayor, Council. This is, as you said, to award the contract to Muniz Concrete and Contracting. I've worked with them personally in the past and have had very good work, good working relationship with them. My company has worked with them for the last fifteen years on many projects for cities in the central Texas area, and I have no, no hesitation in recommending award of, of the contractor for this project.
Great. I have, Council, do you have any questions for Tony? I have one person signed up to speak. Were you done?
I'm done.
All right. Richard Smarsnick, if you will please state your name and your address, you'll have three minutes to share with Council.
Hi, Richard Smarsick, nine twenty-five Main Street, Bastrop, Texas, only place to be. I commend Council and the city manager for moving forward with the Main Street Rehabilitation Project. I especially want to call out trade jobs for listening to the community, community and making sure that the planting and trees will have irrigation. Great job. I can't wait to see the changes and look forward to walking our brand spanking new sidewalks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smarsnick. Councilmember Ennis?
I'd like to say that this is a culmination of years of work. And Mr. Smarsnick and I served on the Main Street Design Committee, working on this, what, three, four, five years ago? Seemed like forever now. And I am so pleased that we are finally getting this done. And I would like to motion, make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Ennis.
Second.
And a second from Mayor Pro Tem Nelson. Are there any further comments? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson? Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. We got to have a round of applause on that. We got to have a round of applause on that.[1532.23][1532.23](Applause). Tony, I am so happy that you are the person who's going to be in charge of making sure that people like Mr. Smarsnick and all his friends and neighbors up and down Main Street are happy with the work that is being done. And I will ask in advance for folks to have patience. It's, there will be days, it will be painful and frustrating, but I am, have no doubt in my mind, it will 100% be worth it. Really, really appreciate it. And just know that Council's 100% behind you and will work with everybody to do the best we can to get through it. It's going to be great to have it done. Council, with that, we are going to be moving into executive session. We have five items to discuss this evening. They are as follows. 10A, council shall convene into closed executive session pursuant to Section 551.074 to, to conduct an annual performance evaluation of the city manager as required by her employment agreement. Item 10B, city council shall convene into closed executive session pursuant to Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code to deliberate the acquisition of outstanding easements on Main Street. Item 10C, city council shall convene into closed executive session for a legal briefing by the city attorney pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071 regarding legal aspects of the city of Bastrop's Personnel Policies Manual. Item 10D, city council shall convene into closed executive session pursuant to Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code to deliberate the acquisition of property located on MLK Drive. And item 10E, city council shall convene into closed executive session for a legal briefing by the city attorney pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071 regarding the law applying to the formation, adoption, and implementation of land use, construction, and development codes, including public notices, public hearings, and public communications. It is 7:42, and we are in executive session. Yes, and we're going to be doing item 10B and item 10D first. So come on back, Tony. Okay, it is 9:38, and we are out of executive session and back into regular session. Councilmember Jackson will be walking right in. We have one, moving on to agenda item 11, take any necessary or appropriate action on matters posted for consideration in closed executive session. We are going to have action on item 10B, which has to do with the outstanding easements on Main Street.
Madam Mayor, move to authorize the mayor to sign the access and license agreement relative to the property located at 928 Main Street here in Bastrop.
My second.
I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Nelson and a second from Councilmember Rogers regarding 928 Main Street, the access and license agreements. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. That concludes item 11, which brings us to item 12, where we all missed Mr. Peterson, and we hope that he gets well quickly. And who would like to make the adjournment?
Move to adjourn. Second.
We, it is 9:39, and we are adjourned. Everyone have safe, healthy, happy holidays, and we will see you next year.